Address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the city council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and online at goodyearaz.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on September 14, 2020. Please join Vice Mayor Stip in the Pledge Allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Almighty God, our prayer this day is that you will fill us with your faith and love so that we might love you with all our heart. Be with us tonight as we do your work here in the city of Goodyear. We pray that we will make wise decisions in fulfillment of your will. Heavenly Father, you are the strength for all who trust in you, and without your aid, we can do no good thing. Grant us the help of your grace that we might please you both in will and deed. We ask that you continue to watch over our state and city from the ravages of the pandemic and pray healing and mercy to those who have been affected by this disease. Keep the men and women serving this nation, both here and abroad, in your protection. Amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have one of our council members. Well, let me just hold that. We have our council member Campbell entering the building. And we are all present. The city clerk will now give information about how to participate in tonight's meeting.
While the Goodyear City Council meetings are open to the public, the occupancy has been reduced to implement social distancing. Seating is generally available on a first-come basis, but meeting attendees will be cycled in and out if necessary to allow for speakers to speak on certain agenda items. If you wish to speak during a regular meeting, please complete a speaker's card so that we may ensure you are in the room for that item. Face masks are required and must be worn when moving throughout the building. Our residents still have the ability in several ways to address the council. They may submit their comments and questions to publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov, and during meetings, they can view the meetings using Facebook and their link from our agendas using Granicus. After the meetings have been completed, they can also be viewed on YouTube. The public may always contact the mayor and council at any time by sending an email to gycouncil@goodyearaz.gov.
Thank you. We have one communication item tonight. The first item, it's exciting. It's an update on the programming activities, the Innovation Hub, including performance data. Ek and I, project manager, Dara, manager, Dara Mann presenting. Dara, we've been looking forward to this. You have the floor.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on the Innovation Hub at Goodyear AZ. I am Dara Mann, Economic Development Project Manager and manager of the Innovation Hub for the last five years. Well, tomorrow will be five years. The last update to council was in July of 2015, so I will also provide some background information. The Innovation Hub is located inside the Goodyear Branch Library and was the first partnership of its kind in the West Valley. The partnerships were the brainchild of Arizona State University's Entrepreneurship Outreach Network, or EON, formerly Alexandria, with the goal of reducing the barrier to business ownership by providing free training and access to resources within a familiar place, the public library. The partnership agreement between ASU, Maricopa County Library District, and Goodyear was approved by Goodyear City Council in February 2014. There are about a dozen similar partnerships listed as current members on ASU's EON website. There are now three in the West Valley. ASU provided guidance and a flexible framework for each city and library team to customize their program to meet the individual needs of their community. Since our partnership is with Maricopa County Library District, the hub space and programs are open to anyone throughout the county, which includes the exceptional benefit of access to all library resources, both tangible and digital. We've always had, excuse me, we've always had a great relationship with the Goodyear library staff, and we appreciate Ben and the entire team. When reopen, the hub space will be available to the public during regular library hours. Entrepreneurs can reserve the conference room on the left, and I share the office on the right with Greater Phoenix Score for one-on-one mentoring appointments. SCORE is a 501(c)(3) and a resource partner of the United States Small Business Administration, providing free mentoring and business training since 1964. We are very fortunate to have Jay Gladney, past SCORE chapter president, provide mentoring at the hub two Saturdays a month. The hub program photos you see in this presentation were all taken pre-COVID, and programs are currently being offered virtually. These photos represent each type of program offered at the hub. Most programs are held in the community room for capacity and not to disrupt the library patrons or staff and to offer programming after hours. Business Builders is held one evening a month and is half-business workshop and half-networking practice. Excuse me, participation in hub programs helps early-stage business owners build their confidence, their support network, and their business. The hub provides opportunities for small business owners to connect with one another, launch and grow their businesses, and introduces them to resources available to small businesses on the national, state, and local levels. Each series of ASU Startup School consists of 12 class hours. Right now, due to COVID, we have three options, all virtual. Every other Saturday, six two-hour sessions. A Tuesday-Thursday series, which starts tomorrow, and a four-day series that will be held next month. It's not a graded course, and there are no college credits associated with the class. Entrepreneurs finish the series with the tools to research and build a strong business plan and information on resources available to help them be successful. Each series covers the topics you see here. Most are self-explanatory. Business structure includes researching, options on forming their business, and where to find business license and permitting information required for their particular industry sector. After completing 11 full series of ASU Startup School, here's what we know about attendees in the aggregate. 29% drop out after attending only one class, and that's okay. Many decide they're not quite ready, which Startup School helps them realize, hopefully, before they've committed resources. 40% already own a small business. 8% attend in support of a spouse, partner, relative, or friend. And so far, entrepreneurs have launched 31 businesses during or following their attendance in the program. These are some of the amazing entrepreneurs who participate in various programs at the hub. Most were already in business, and some are just starting out. As I mentioned previously, participation is not limited to Goodyear residents, although the majority of participants are Goodyear residents, nearly 70%. 24% are from the neighboring communities of Avondale, Buckeye, Litchfield, and Tolleson. 6% from Phoenix and Tempe. And the remaining is from the Northwest Valley, Peoria, Surprise, Waddell, Youngtown, and Sun City. Goodyear's Innovation Hub exists to encourage and connect these passionate entrepreneurs. They may be launching a business on their own, but they are not alone. If you were curious of those 31 businesses that were started, these are the industry sectors in which those fall, from the most to the least, so most being business-to-business marketing and business services, and then down to, we did, we had one nonprofit and one home-based bakery. Innovation Hub Interactions are one of Economic Development's annual performance measures. And the conference room there means reservations at the Innovation Hub, and mentoring includes my mentoring appointments as well as the Greater Phoenix Score mentoring appointments. So for our annual goal of 480, we hit 1,158. I'm happy to share that participation and interactions at the Innovation Hub continue to build. And generally, year over year, the conference room accounts for about 25% of all of our interactions, but due to COVID, that's been down to just under 18%, but we've made up for that with virtual programming and reaching out through email and phone. The Innovation Hub operates on a very economical budget. We were fortunate and very thankful to have received additional funds, which allowed us to accomplish a number of things. We recently completed a refresh inside the hub, updating to the colorful graphics you see here. We purchased three Greater Phoenix Score workshops and allowed participants to attend free of charge. We represented the hub at the annual West Valley Chambers of Commerce Alliance Biz2Biz Expo last year, and we purchased an iPad and a locking stand to replace the sign-in sheet when the library reopens. So what does the future hold for the Innovation Hub? This image is an artist's rendering of the potential space at the Civic Square. So plans for the future Civic Square, including relocating the library and the Innovation Hub. The hub space will be about 300 square feet larger than it is now. Although we lose some of our dedicated open space, we gain a second, larger conference room, and we will be adjacent to business materials and a large, shared, open space on the second floor. I'm anticipating most programming will still be held away from the hub in the new first-room community, first-floor community room, again for capacity and for after-hours programming. We will continue to evolve the successful programs that we have now and look for ways to incorporate additional small business development assistance to meet local business owners' needs. We'll also identify additional training and networking opportunity for all participants. We recently surveyed Startup School participants and asked business owners if they were interested in mentoring at the Innovation Hub. We received 16 responses in the categories that you see here: peer-to-peer mentoring, Small Business Roundtable, and Industry Expert Presenter at both Startup School and Business Builders. I'm excited to utilize their expertise to help their peers. That concludes my presentation. I'd like to leave you with the survey comments from a few Innovation Hub Startup School participants. We are very happy to be part of a city working to support small business. I thought the course was really well done. I especially love that it's here in Goodyear, that it's in collaboration with the library, and that it's free. Thank you, mayor and council. I'm available for questions.
Well, thank you. Comments, council? Councilman Lortano?
I want to thank you for the presentation, first of all, and all the work your team does. It's great to see all the small businesses. As a small business owner myself, I can tell you they've been decimated out there. So thank you for all the support and the continuing support, and just even some of that peer-to-peer mentoring for someone to talk to someone and get some ideas right now. It's a great thing, so thank you for keeping that communication open, and I'm looking forward to a bright future.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and council. Well, yes. Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, also, I think it's a very great program. I've been telling a lot of people to go there, and then when I go there, I see four or five people I already know who are starting businesses or are excited, they're really excited to be there. A lot of good success stories. So I think it's a great opportunity because small businesses are definitely a foundation for our community and the region. So having this is definitely a great resource for them. And like I said, some are businesses that are just starting out, some are ones that just want to learn a little bit more, already established, and learn some more tools to make themselves better. So I think it's a great resource, and I'm looking forward to it continuing. And the numbers, as you can see, have already, have continued to grow. So I think it's definitely getting more popularity, and it's a great resource. So thank you so much for leading it for the five years. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, mayor and council.
I just want to say thank you for keeping it going during all this time and how important it is, and that you're even reaching out and looking forward to the future. I like that you're continuing to wanting to grow and continue to improve it. So I think you have a great foundation, and I look forward to continued great success. I think it's an invaluable service we provide, not only for Goodyear but for our region.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and council. Well, Darren, you've come a long ways. Do you remember when it first started? I do. So congratulations. I'm excited. You've worked so hard. We've had a downturn, and now we've had the COVID. So I mean, you've gone through some mountains ahead to climb, and it looks so much nicer in there. It really is getting very, very professional-looking, and the extra seating and all of that. And when you think that we actually confined you to a small area, and yet you've been able to accomplish so much. And I'm sure those people that opened their businesses are telling you all the time, "Thank you. Thank you for that." They would not have it. So congratulations.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of Goodyear City Council.
No speaker cards, mayor.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please read Consent Agenda Items 2 through 5 by title only?
Number 2, Approval of Minutes. Number 3, Accept the Dedication of a Quick Claim Deed for a Portion of West Camelback Road Adjacent to the Azure Canyon Development from Camelback 240 Acres Limited Partnership. Number 4, Authorize the Issuance of an Easement to Southwest Gas Corporation Within the Existing 175th Avenue Alignment As Required For the Abandonment of a Portion of 175th Avenue. Number 5, Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2097, Authorizing the Submission of an Application for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG Program Funds to U.S. Department of Justice, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute All Documents Relating to Said Application, and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Grant Agreement if Grant Funds Are Awarded, and Authorizing the City Manager to Approve the Required Budget Transfer if Grant Funds Are Awarded.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from this consent agenda? Then I would like a motion and a second to approve Items 2 through 5. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second? I heard a motion from Councilman Pozillo and a second from Vice Mayor Stip. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pozillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. So the next one is an item, is a business to consider approving the preliminary plat for Estrella Parcel 11-H. Now, we'd had a little discussion. Is this the one that the council can have a conversation with in between? You don't remember that? Well, I'm just going to leave it on the floor, so if you do have a question, I'm going to let you ask the question in the middle, so just kind of give me a signal, okay? And we have Christopher Baker, our Development Services Director. Christopher?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight, I'm here to present the Australia Parcel 11-H Preliminary Plat. The subject property is located in the Lucero portion of Australia, which is just a little bit north of the traffic circle, right by the Star Point or Star Tower, excuse me. The subject parcel, as you can see outlined on the map on your right, is parcel 8 on this drawing that has the red box around it. It is zoned for low-density, single-family residential, low- and medium-density, single-family residential. The plat before you this evening is about 25 acres, includes five tracks, and creates about 67 lots. You can tell from the plat that there are two points of ingress and egress off of Hillside and also Cendaro, so there's no issues as far as access goes. Those will be improved roads, providing access to the community. It meets all the zoning classification requirements in the PAD, as well as the zoning ordinance and all the engineering design standards. Planning Commission considered this at their August 26 meeting and recommended approval to the council.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Thank you. Then I need a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for the Estrella Parcel 11-H, subject to stipulations. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second?
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell and a second from Councilman Kano. Open for council discussion? Councilman Campbell?
So, Christopher, with us approving this preliminary plat for 11H, does that make all of the Lucero pad complete? Is there still more to develop there?
There's plenty more to go. Yes, ma'am. So all of these... There's the pointer. Like 1112, 1111, 11E, there's all of this up in this area here. All is still pending development. This around here is under construction currently on generally this side of Hillside Drive, so there's quite a bit still to go.
Okay. I was just going by this map, and I was assuming everything in the circle with the number and alphabet meant that it had already come before council?
No, ma'am, not all of it. That's just the designations of the parcels as we move forward.
All right. Well, this is an exciting area of Estrella, and their beautiful homes is very well-done, and I'm excited to see them moving forward and doing even more homes up there.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments? Well, I say, drove up there this weekend. I was amazed, all the homes that are there, and how much really landmass they have up there. So it was really fun. I really wished COVID wasn't here because I would have gotten out of the car and toured some of them, but I didn't do that, so. Well, great. So council, let's vote for this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Let's go to number seven. On the business, it's considered authorizing a Community Paramedic Pilot Program with United Healthcare. Fire Chief Paul Luizzi presenting. Paul?
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we're going to provide an update on our United Healthcare grant that we have for our Community Paramedicine Project. So just by way of a reminder, what does Community Paramedicine do? Helps us coordinate the care for patients that otherwise would use the 911 system for emergency department to solve, or the emergency department to help solve their medical issues. Really still a new and evolving model. So originally, last year, I came in front of you and presented the idea of the grant with United Healthcare. So it was actually about a year ago. We began seeing patients in early November. The grant was originally for $175,000. Unfortunately, we had to pause operations because of COVID. And so we really got about six months in of seeing patients prior to the pandemic hitting. So we wanted to make sure that we were providing updates to council, but we were planning on doing an update in April, but unfortunately, we were in a pause for operations. So really, the purpose for us with the grant, and we worked quite a bit with United Healthcare on this, is making sure we're hitting the frequent users of the 911 system. We're looking for field referrals, so that's something that we really wanted to improve from our first pilot that we had done. We really wanted to improve our field referrals, and those are the ones coming from the crews. And then also looking for some increased visibility with the hospitals or facilities that are, that we help serve. We're still defining our patients the same way, somebody that accesses the 911 system three or more times in a month, 12 more times in a year. But then again, there's the definition for a field referral, which is coming from the 911 crews. Again, we're still out proactively visiting prior to them calling 911. That's really our goal. Emphasizing the data collection, we worked with United Healthcare on really refining our data metrics to make sure that we were collecting the information that was beneficial to them. And some of our goals is to reduce the emergent use, so the non-emergent use of the 911 system, and then also help reduce the readmission rates for the three-day, seven-day, and 30-day patients. We really felt like some of the model that we had in the first grant that we had done rolls over into this one, trying to create that sustainable model, demonstrate to our healthcare professionals and providers and partners that this is a sustainable model. We really want to try to support that vulnerable population as much as we can. We're trying to reduce the burden on the emergency departments, and we really want to continue to provide that outstanding innovative customer support. We continue to develop our referral network because we feel like that's very important. We don't want to be the stop or the end-all for these patients. We want to be able to refer them on to the correct medical resources. So we've got these groups, if not more, that are already interested in continuing that that relationship with us, and they include Benavia, Brookdale, Care First, Erie Agency on Aging, Crisis Response Network, Home Instead, Hospice of the Valley, which have been tremendous partners for us, as well as Meals of Joy. The update, unfortunately, is Peoria is going to pull out of the operations of the program. They did receive direction from their council to start a new program, and because of their staffing, they needed to direct their staffing towards that new program. So Surprise and Goodyear would like to continue this program. We'll continue to see patients between two and three times per week. Peoria will still administer the grant for us financially, so we don't have to keep changing money back and forth. And we'll just invoice them for our costs during the remainder of the program. So what did we do in the first six months? We created more partnerships. One of them was with Health Current, who holds all the health information exchange for over 7 million covered lives. And so that allowed us to create patient alerts. So anytime one of our patients may have gone to a doctor's office visit, or even if unfortunately they had to go back to the emergency department, we would get an alert into the system. That way, we would know to connect with them within 24 to 48 hours. We trained an additional 13 medics. We had over 225 patients contacted. We were able to enroll 92 patients into the program, and we provided over 200 assessments for those patients. Predominantly, a lot of our patients suffer from diabetes, asthma, COPD, CHF, social needs, and other healthcare needs as well. We continue to do the same assessment. We're in their home, and it's quite a bit of what they do. The medics tend to spend more than an hour with these patients, so it's a different approach. You know, typically, we're spending 10 to 15 minutes on an emergent call. Now, we're spending over an hour, really trying to understand what their needs are and trying to find their root cause and develop the right resource for them. So today, what we'd like to do is recommend to continue with the Community Paramedicine Grant with Surprise, United Healthcare. They've been great partners, and I am available for any questions that you may have.
Chief Luizzi, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then I need a motion and a second to authorize the city manager or the designate to execute all documents necessary to enter into the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement with the City of Peoria and the City of Surprise for provisions of Community Paramedicine Services. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second?
I heard a motion from Councilman Lortano and a second from Councilman Pozillo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pozillo?
Chief, what is the hospital's participation in this program? Or are they an active partner of any kind?
We actually had the most participation this time so far with Dell Webb. They actually started referring patients to us that they wanted us to follow up on. They were very high-risk patients. So they wanted to ensure that they were, you know, getting all their medical resources. We continue to have ongoing conversations with Abrazo. And so we're hopeful at some point that those partnerships will continue or improve.
The reason why I ask is that your goal is admirable. And my gut tells me, and I'm sure you probably don't have all the numbers, but there's got to be some reductions, I would assume, in Abrazo and some of our local hospitals of not using the emergency operations. So with that being said, I would think it's to their advantage to participate. And I'm hoping in the future, you'll be able to do a negotiation with them to try to get them to partner with this because I see a win-win for both.
Yeah.
Reduce their costs. And I believe with the way the healthcare system is set up now, if they get repeat, people going back into their system, I think it affects their billing as well. So I would think it's in their best interest. So good luck. I hope you can try to lock that down because I'm a firm believer that that partnership would be a win-win for both, the patients, the hospital, the city, et cetera. So again, I appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I just could add, this partnership with United Healthcare is evidence of our ability to at least tell our story and show our data and the benefits of that data. So, you know, kudos to United Healthcare kind of taking a chance on us. So we hope to continue that partnership with them as well as our local hospitals.
Yeah, and I appreciate them stepping up. I would like to see some of the others, you know, partner with you as well. But I appreciate them stepping up.
Agreed.
Because, you know, if you can have a plan where you're trying to sort of nip it in the butt upfront.
Yep.
Everybody wins in that. And I appreciate all those efforts. Just wish you could get some of the others to see those benefits as well. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Well, Mayor and Council, I ask Chief Luigi to come and talk to the Mayor Copa County Human Services Committee and explain our wonderful program and share it with all the other cities that sit on that board with me. I'm very proud of this. And I have probably spoken to our city manager five million times to ensure that we could continue funding this program because two years ago, I think it was two years ago, maybe it was a year ago, I was actually at a patient's home. Unbeknownst to me, the community paramedicine crew came in, assessed him, and really changed his life because he had been so scared. And he was, Joe was, what, 95, 96?
Yeah.
And he was scared. He didn't know what to do. He didn't know what medicines to take. He couldn't read the bottles. And the professionalism that our crew showed him and the concern and the caring changed his whole demeanor. And he was not afraid anymore. So they continued to make calls to him. They even helped us get him situated into a home so that he would be safe because we determined he was not safe living alone. And he had no family. So it's just such an important program. And I really would encourage Mayor Lord and possibly Representative Osborne to talk to Abrazo's board even to show them that this is such an important part of our community, especially since it's our own fire department. We want to give our residents this service because it is absolutely fabulous. And it does clear up when someone is discharged. They don't hear the directions halfway. They don't read them, and they don't understand them. So when our paramedic crew, our paramedicine crew comes by and reinforces what the doctor said and explains it in plain English that they can understand, it makes all the difference in the world. And it makes these people not call 911 because they're afraid. So thank you for all you do. Thank you for all your crews. You're wonderful, and we are real proud of it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lortano?
Thank you so much. That just really puts it in perspective when you hear about someone who's talked to someone who chooses a program. I support this program 100%. Now, I do have a question. With COVID, are you back up and running, able to do it yet? Or with changes or what's up?
Yeah, so the goal is to bring the medics back, do a refresher with them, just to make sure we're all on the same page. And then get out to start seeing patients, probably end of October, early November. So we're ordering enough PPE for them that they'll be safe. So we feel like at that point, we'll be safe not to go and see the patients, so.
Now, I do have a question about that because I've been hearing about the rapid testing. Is that something that either they or FIRE or somebody that we're going to have access to in the near future? Because you guys are at the front lines.
You know, we're listening with the county, public health at their level, trying to understand how they're going to make that available for us. So those conversations can continue. But we've had some really great healthcare partners that have not let us down at all. So when we need testing, we're able to get it pretty quickly, so.
That's good to hear. And I do support it 100%. I think it's a wonderful program, especially from what you're saying. The people that you're serving are the people most at risk with flu season coming on top of everything else that's going on. So thank you. And I'm sure not only you're helping them, but you're saving their lives. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Well, I'd just like to say that, you know, we hear time after time partnership in the West Valley. And this is a prime example of that. And I think that just brings us all closer together, especially when you talk about health and life. And Wally, that was a really good conversation you just had with the chief telling your on-hand experience. And then lastly, I've been in the hospital several times. And when you're being checked out, you, they're telling you what to do, but you're not in a mental state to absorb it. And sometimes I've said to the, on the hospital board meeting, that it needs to be a little bit slower and they need to be a little more help, find some other way. They're very good. They list the medication on the board, on the whiteboard, and then they brief them. But I can tell you, I've gotten home several times and thought, what'd they say? You know, and then the pills come, I go, what am I supposed to take? Yeah, and I think it hits all ages because it's the state you are. You're anxious because you want to go home, but then you're going to leave that care. And it'd get really uneasy because who's going to take care of me if I have it reoccur? So I think this is real good. And I am happy to talk to the board. It's worthwhile. But before I do, you're going to give me a briefing?
Of course.
One that I can carry with me.
Absolutely.
That I make sure that I, everything works for that, okay?
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. So now we're going to vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item in business is consider approving the light emitting LED streetlight conversion. Do you see how I went over that name fairly quickly? Did you like the way I did that? Uh huh, of course. City Traffic Engineer Hugh Bickhoff will present. Hugh?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. And I'm Hugh Bickoff. I have Doug Sandstrom. And tonight, we'll be presenting the LED streetlight implementation project. Just to give you a quick agenda, what I'll be going over this evening. First will be over the project background. Next, the implementation plan. Then summary of the costs and savings. Then I'll turn over to finance to discuss the financial details. And then closing with a recommendation. Give a quick background on this project. We'll start in October of 2010. That's when the city purchased the streetlight system from APS. At that time, the city system had 8,150 high-pressure sodium streetlights. And then moving ahead, August of 2017, that's when the city updated our design standards to require that all new streetlight installations were to be LED technology. And January of 2018 is when council approved the streetlight audit and pilot project. And details on the pilot project, three areas in the city installed LED streetlights. The first location was Litchfield Road from Van Buren to I-10. The second location was selected local streets in the Australia community. And then the third location were selected local and collector's streets in the Sadea community. Moving ahead to July of 2018, the results of the audit were discussed in a council work session, and the project was added to the CIP. And then just a few months ago, in July of 2020, the LED streetlight implementation project was approved as part of the fiscal year 2125 CIP. The implementation plan. The plan is, starting this month, if approved, starting this month and then into the following month, October of 2020, the contractor will purchase the light fixtures. And then October of this year, 2020, through February of 2021, the light fixtures will be installed by the contractor. And then March 2021, the project will be complete and the warranty period will begin. Regarding the warranty, the LED streetlight fixtures will have a warranty of 10 years. And their labor from the installation will have a one-year period of warranty. The project area. The project area for this project is it will install LED streetlights on all public developed streets in the city with two exceptions. One exception are the decorative streetlights in Australia that are along Australia Parkway and Elliott Road. Reason is that those are owned by the Australia Joint Committee or the HOA. The other location is the North Subdivision Neighborhood shown on the slide above. The reason why is those existing streetlight locations in the North Subdivision do not meet city standards. And a large number of those locations will require new poles. So it was determined by city staff that this area would be better suited as its own standalone streetlight project. And that is an existing CIP's project. And it will install 88 new LED streetlights. The design will take place in this current fiscal year, fiscal year 21, with construction in fiscal year 22. And a majority of that funding for that project will be by community development block grant funding, otherwise known as CDBG funding. So a summary of the costs and savings. The LED lights, the purchase of the LED lights and their installation is estimated at $3 million. The construction administration by a third party is estimated at $100,000 for a total project cost of $3.1 million. Regarding savings, one of the main reasons for this project is saving money. And the annual savings with this project are in two different areas. The first one is the guaranteed energy savings per year, which are guaranteed by the contractor, which the first year is guaranteed to be no lower than $311,600. And the maintenance savings per year, what we pay to maintain the streetlights currently, the savings in that area will be approximately $90,000 per year, totaling the $401,600 per year. And the simple payback, using those numbers what I just described above, would equal 7.7 years. The project budget. Initially, this project was scoped in 2018. And that project at that time was scoped to be $3,392,000. However, since that time, we've reworked the project as discussed in previous slides, removing the North Subdivision. And with that, we also had the differences between the two projects, between the 3.392 scoped in 2018, the adopted number up there, and the proposed, what I'm proposing today, the $3.1 million, was the main difference between that was the original version included 200 pole replacements as a contingency. And that is a majority of the difference in the funds you see above. And with that, I will turn over to Doug Sandstrom for a discussion of the financials.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. One of the other differences that you saw on the prior slide was $20,000 of debt issuance costs. One of the recommendations we're bringing forward today is this project was included in the budget using financing through MRSGO to pay for it, taking that $401,000 of savings and using that to pay debt service, which would come out to about the same dollar amount. Due to the increased revenue that we've gotten in the last three months of last fiscal year, we've, I'll go into some detail on that a little bit here. Our recommendation is to use cash instead of financing it. By using cash, we will save significantly on $40,000 in bond issuance costs and about $400,000 of interest over that 10-year period. That's an estimate at 2.5% interest, which is, we got really low interest rates out there. If this money were to be invested, we would be making less than 1%. So at the end of the day, it really makes a lot of sense to save on that interest cost. And the other piece of it is it has zero impact on any other planned project that's in the mix by switching it over to cash. If for some reason something were to happen where we had a $3 million shortfall, we always have access to credit to be able to make it up. However, based on the numbers you're about to see, that's really not going to be an issue for us in the foreseeable future. Whether this project is financed or under a recommended cash approach, the payback is, makes the project worthwhile, whether you got debt service in there or whether you don't. On an annual basis, that $401,000 of savings would either be used to pay for the financing or under the cash approach, it is an actual reduction in the transfer needed from the general fund into HERF. So that's freeing up $400,000 annually in operational ongoing revenues. If you could go to the next slide. Where the cash comes from, and as I said, and I think you've seen in some of our monthly reports, our estimated general fund revenues for fiscal year 2020 were $135 million. We had came back to the council back in March and really revised those down at the beginning of the pandemic just because of all the unknowns. Fortunately for us, a lot of those downfalls were never realized. So our revenues kept coming in at much higher amounts than what we had thought. At the end of fiscal year 2020, our actuals are actually just under $20 million higher than what that estimate was. A big chunk of that is in construction sales tax as well as non-construction sales tax and developer user fees, which are permits over at the Development Continuum. We did have in the estimate for 2020, the Arizona CARES Act of $10 million received. We had already counted on that. So that is not part of that $20 million excess. So rather than going out and borrowing $3 million when we had an extra $20 million come in, our recommendation is that we use cash instead of financing.
Thank you, Doug. So regarding a recommendation, first recommendation is to approve budget transfers utilizing $3.1 million in one-time general fund resources from increased beginning balance. And the second is to approve expenditures of $3.1 million for installing 9,160 new LED streetlights. And that concludes our presentation. We have any answer, any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Can I have a motion in second to approve the expenditure in the amount of $3,100,000 for the conversion of the city's streetlight fixtures to LED and related budget transfers to change total project budget and funding to $3,100,000 in one-time general fund and remove the $3,392,000 general government capital fund from the budget for the planned financing of the project? Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Vice Mayor. I always want to call you Vice Mayor Stiff. And a second-bring Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor?
I've got a comment for Hugh. Congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
Been a long time waiting.
Been a long time waiting. I have a question for Doug. More of a, I think more of a statement on the whole thing. I realize where we're at with 20 million over expected revenues, et cetera. We have not had the council discussion yet on what 2021 looks like with additional. And this can quickly spiral out of control. I'm not looking at you when I say that, I'm just saying generally that we've got, we have more money on hand than we thought. And we were always led to believe that we were going to have these discussions before projects came forward. This one is definitely an exceptional opportunity. And I appreciate it coming forward. But I think we all have to just remember that until we have that discussion about what we're going to do, that this should, in the next six weeks or eight weeks until we have that discussion in November, we don't get crazy and say, oh, we've got an extra $30 million sitting around, that we really start to talk about how we're going to look at that strategically going forward instead of piece by piece. And I just kind of say that very, very generically. But I appreciate the heads up on it because this would have been easy to just stick with the status quo. And I appreciate you recognizing it. Thanks.
Councilman Hampton.
Not having a beard. I expected to see you.
Down to their ZZ Top for Joe. Yeah, and your point is well taken and we've had lots of discussion on that as well.
Councilmember Hampton.
Yeah, I also, I appreciate Vice Mayor Stip's comment as well about having a discussion around the future as well. But then, yeah, I think it's a great idea to use the cash. I like using cash if we can save, especially because we're saving so much money on it as well. And then, what is the timeline for this project? I'd look at the CIP. Did we say what, that's a lot of polls. I'm curious, I'm sure it's not going to take, it'll take a while.
Sure. Councilmember Hampton, happy to answer your question. So this is our schedule. So this project only involves LED streetlights, as in the light fixture itself. We're not replacing any poles with this project, so the process is relatively quick. So once the fixtures have been ordered, again, it's looking like approximately by the end of October, the streetlights will be obtained by the contractor. And then from October of this year through February of 2021, so by the end of February, the installation should be complete.
Right. And then you said it took a contingency out of adding new poles? And that's because we're not replacing, that's the difference with this style is that we're not replacing the poles, it's just the light fixture. That's why you removed that contingency out of there of the 200 poles?
Yes. What was determined was that this is mostly a light or a light fixture replacement project. And why we removed, or why the decision was made to remove the poles from the project was we wanted to keep it, it would make the project move much faster, be much quicker to complete it, as opposed to mixing in fixtures and poles. It was determined that would potentially add more additional time to the project when the main focus was just to get the lights completed and done.
No, I think it'll be great. I think it'll look really sharp in our city, so I'm looking forward to it. I know being on SEDAC, that was also the project for North Subdivisions. I know that'll look great there as well, so, so yeah. So I think it'll be a great project for the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
I appreciate where you laid out the presentation, especially the fact you showed the payback and where all the funds are coming from and what the difference between the construction sales tax that you expected and what you actually have. I agree, you know, to get a 7.7 payback versus 8-point-some-odd in years' payback. We've got the cash. If things do start to go south, I still believe there's enough because of our fiscal policies and the buffers that we have out there, there's enough to make up that. If we have to borrow something else, I'd rather take advantage of this since we have that kind of cash. So I'm with you on this one.
Any other comments over here? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Loretano. I think I should have called him before I did, Joe.
I didn't have my hand up then.
Ah, okay.
Thank you very much, both of you, for the presentation. I do appreciate that. Having seen these up, or at least one that I found in Estrella, it does make a big difference. I mean, it is night and day, I guess is a good thing to say, but you can tell when it's next to the other one. So I think our residents, when these get rolled out, will really like that. And I think we need to say it once again, $20 million, not including the $10 million CARES Act, that's amazing. And I want to thank our city leadership and the whole leadership team on that one because I think that's something that's very important for our residents to hear. And I agree, I think we're all on the same page that we'll talk about the best use as we go on. But I think this is a good use of a very small part of that to save all those financing costs over the period of time. So thank you for looking into that.
Well, I think this is a great example for residents, the steps and process it takes. We've been working with those lights for a long time, as you've noted on here, and the steps you've had to take, so it kind of gives them an example of how long it takes to do this. And of course, I don't always agree with Councilman Stip on this, he mentioned it before. And that's fine if council wants to come to an extra meeting. And if you're in town and if you do that, because we do have a problem sometimes with timing. There are things that I see in the budget, we could never do this one, I would not think to do it. But you've been very clear on how percentage of what our cash is from last year, what retail has brought in. So there really isn't any risk on this. This was a project that the people wanted and it's been sitting there for a long time. So that's where I have a question. It has been, because I was here when discussing this. So Bill, that is my feelings on that. And I, not being cavalier with our citizens' money at all, but I think there are some things that we have a process for that we've had out in public for a long time, saying we're going to do it. And we don't have enough council meetings to hit it on the target all the time. And so we leave it, it takes more time. So that's my opinion on that. I just wanted to make it clear. And this is what this council is all about. Everybody has their own opinion and they feel very free to talk about it. And that's why I like being mayor here, because we can all have our opinions. So thank you very much and a nice presentation. Very, very well done. Okay, any other comments? All right, then let's see what we're going to, if the council's done, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. The final item on business tonight, consider approving the appointments to the Judicial Advisory Committee. And Human Resources Director Lyman Lockett will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. That was so exuberant, I feel like I have to say.
At the time of hire of our current presiding judge, council discussed and decided to move forward with the Judicial Advisory Committee. The first step in that process was adopting ordinance, which was done back in late 2019. This evening, we're here to take the next step in moving forward with making this committee, bringing this committee into existence. As outlined in the ordinance, the purpose of this judicial advisory committee will be to act as an advisory committee to council for the appointment of judges, the reappointment of judges, development of performance review criteria for judges, conducting performance review surveys for judges, and providing performance review feedback on judges. The council subcommittee has identified a talented group of legal professionals and citizens to join two existing members that are holdovers from our judicial selection committee. The selection committee was involved in the selection of our current presiding judge. The ordinance requires the makeup of this committee be two presiding judges, two members of the Arizona Bar Association, three citizen members, and the Goodyear Presiding Judge is a non-voting member seated for all matters except the reappointment and evaluation of the presiding judge. If council approves tonight's action, the next step in the process will be assembling the committee to begin developing the criteria for the performance evaluation. Tonight, we're asking council to approve the appointments of the following members. Citizen Members Jenny Boyle, Alex DeShuck, Robert Jones, and alternate Edwin Hopler. And legal professionals Gina Godby-Hear, Esquire, who is with the Maricopa County Attorney's Office. Hillary Weinberg, Esquire, also with the Maricopa County Attorney's Office. Honorable, the Honorable Maria Brewer, Presiding Judge from the City of Buckeye. And the Honorable David Fuller, the Presiding Judge from the City of Chandler. That concludes my presentation and we are offering that recommendation for approval and appointment of these committee members.
Thank you very much. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Can I have a motion in second to approve the appointments to the Judicial Advisory Committee? Do I hear that motion?
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell and a second from Councilman Hampton, open for council discussion. Councilmember Pizzillo?
Make sure I understand what we're doing tonight correctly. First, it's just a matter of getting the selection of the members, correct?
Correct.
Because as mentioned in my last council meeting, I've got some concerns about the culture and the environment and the turnover. Is that something that will be addressed at another meeting when we give directions to the, to the group? Is what to look at and to provide some recommendations to council?
So we have a process that we've outlined and I can walk through the process for establishing the criteria. And that might help in terms of getting feedback. So we certainly would be open to feedback tonight to ensure that, this is council's process, so we want to ensure that the elements that council wants are included in the evaluation criteria.
To me, it's two pieces. First, to explain why there's such a large amount of turnover, number one. And then maybe a recommendation on a plan to stabilize such turnover. Because as I mentioned last council meeting, I'm very concerned with the numbers and whether they're even sustainable over time if that continues that's been going on there. So not the day-to-day operation, I'm looking at a culture and an organization and how that is functioning. If that, and as an HR person, I would assume you understand where I'm kind of coming from there. But I want that part of it, just not the technical skills, not just the technical abilities. I want to know the environment in which the employees are working within and under. And if there's a systemic reason why that turnover is so high, what is the recommendation to try to stabilize that and put it on the right path? So I want to make sure that's in there somewhere.
Certainly. And I believe, I'm not sure if Judge Galindo, she may have called in, so she may be online and she may also would like to respond, but we are working with the court.
Absolutely. I am, I am here, I'm not too sure if you can hear me all. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am present, I have been listening. And again, this committee is for the purposes of recruiting qualified judicial staff to be both presiding and line attorneys, I'm sorry, associate judges should the need arise based on Goodyear's growth in population. And in reference to Councilman Pizzillo's inquiries, which we reached out to your office with Mr. Reader last week to discuss and meet our direction in turn from Mr. Reader by you, sir, was that once we received the documentation from Human Resources, would you be amenable to a meeting? We further extended the invitation to all members, Mayor and Council, to openly discuss the concerns that have been highlighted today of why the high rate of turnover and whether or not there is a systematic reason for such turnover and any recommendations in order to discuss the culture, environment, and high turnover rate. This morning, Mr. Lyman Lockett has graciously provided the court with what we had requested. We have a copious amount of personnel files, which we will be digging into as well as supporting documentation, which we will in turn prepare as we have discussed with management, with HR, as well as with Mr. Reader and for anyone who would like to explore this further with me and with my court administrator. We are amenable to have one-on-one meetings, as we have extended. Additionally, we will be preparing at your request, something in writing.
Excuse me, I think this conversation by law has to stop. Our lawyer is looking at me with the evil eye, so I'm sorry I have to interrupt you, but that's the law.
Understood.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think we need to get back on to the subject of appointing the committee and.
It's all right, you were enthusiastic, we understand. Thank you.
And I think there's two elements. If I could continue on, I think there's two elements. One, establishing the criteria for ongoing performance review, which would include an employee component, a survey component. And there are typical components that are included in the evaluation. We have included in our straw man here that will start with the committee to have a court staff survey included. So that would be ongoing. I think you have a question about immediate and at least recent past results that we could provide additional information on. On a go-forward basis, though, we would hope that the evaluation process of all the elements that are involved are constantly feeding council with that desired information.
Thank you. Any other comment? Councilman Loretano?
I just want to thank, it was Councilmember Keno and Councilmember Campbell and myself that were on the committee. And they were all, I want to just direct it back to the members of the committee, highly dedicated community members, willing to serve, volunteer. So I want to thank them all for their service. I don't believe any of them are here tonight.
No.
But if they are listening, thank you very much and congratulations.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor?
It sounds like we need one more bite at the apple on determining how we're going to do this evaluation process at another meeting that's agendized correctly. I don't know if that's a work session or if that's a yellow paper or something, but I think there's some, now that we're embarking on having a judicial advisory committee, I think we're all going to be uncertain of how does this look going forward? Because in the past, we've collected in a room and done this evaluation. I think we need, we need to know what that looks like now going forward and not tonight because it's not on the agenda. So I'll leave that up to everyone else's discretion, whether that's a yellow paper or whether we have a work session on it or whatever. But I think, I think we need to have a better understanding of how that's going to work just generically now at whatever appropriate time. But I appreciate everyone's work. Thanks.
So we do have a motion on the table, so any other comments from this side on this motion? So we'll just go through it and vote it down and then bring it back or postpone it? I'm sorry, what? Oh, this is just the, okay, all right. Okay. I still put a vote out there, is what we're saying. Yes, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. I think you got the message.
Got it.
Yeah, the first one and then this one, okay. All right, council, any comments, commendations, reports, or requests for the future items? Vice Mayor?
I have three. First, it happened on the way, the drive to the meeting here tonight. We've been telling the folks in Palm Valley Five that we've designated truck routes and trucks aren't supposed to go through, and I watched a semi truck drive up Falcon Drive tonight on my way here. I followed one the other day and thought, well, maybe they delivered to the school. And I was kind of mentally generous, but tonight it was absolutely a violation of our truck route. And everybody in that neighborhood is extremely concerned about the truck traffic and they just proved that no matter what we, no matter what we say, they're not abiding by it. So, and it was a UPS truck, I'm going to call them out. So we need to get to UPS, remind their drivers of the correct route to take to get out of that facility. And I think we need to do better signage about our truck routes in the city. We went through this whole gyration about identifying 303 and I-10 and no trucks unless we're making local deliveries on any of our other streets and constantly are seeing semis down Indian School and up and down Bullard, et cetera. So I'd like to see some action on that, and that's number one. Number two is, this is just a request for information on employee diversity within the city as compared to the diversity of our community. Are we reflective of, does our staff reflect our community? I'd like to know kind of where we stand in that, in that regard, if that data is available. And if it's not available, then let's figure out how to get it. And then finally, there was a very long series, one of the news channels did, posted online regarding Brady List submissions, et cetera. I would like to know, have a list of the number of people that we have submitted for Brady List consideration in the last three years and the reason why.
I'm sorry, for what?
The Brady List, police officer getting called out for being untruthful.
Yeah, I didn't know what a Brady List was.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, I don't want to give kudos to the news agency necessarily, but one of them locally has done a long expose. Fortunately, we weren't named, but I'd like to know where we're at. As you may or may not have figured out, I think us being transparent and very accountable with our police department, which is doing a great job, they've been super transparent. I think one more, one more opportunity is a good sign for our community that we are being as absolutely transparent as we possibly can be. You know, hats off to Chief Rodriguez and the whole gang over at PD. But I'd like to kind of get a report on that as well. That is it.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you. Anything else? All right, City Manager, are you around?
I don't have anything tonight, this evening, Mayor.
Okay. All righty. The next meeting will be a work session on Monday, September 21, 2020, at 6:00 PM. Now, we do have a work session due, so I'm going to adjourn this. Do you need a break? All right, we'll take a 10 minutes break. This meeting's adjourned. I'd like to go someplace by your hotel.
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to call to order the work session on September 14, 2020. We are all present. We have one item on the agenda tonight. I would like to remind council, the staff will be making a presentation. We'll try not to interrupt while you're making the presentation. For this item, the city council will receive and review recommendations from the Charter Review Committee and provide directions to the staff. And facilitator Tammy Sharif will present. Tammy?
Thank you very much, Mayor and councils. Great to be here today. I am here with Renee Gillian. He is the chairman of your Citizens Committee to Review the Charter. And sitting behind me are many of the Charter members. We want to officially introduce them at the end of our presentation today. So the Charter Committee has started this process probably around January, met a few times, and then COVID hit. So we took a little break, came back, and I have to say, these, you selected a very detailed-oriented, discussion-oriented. I mean, they went through this charter like a fine-tooth comb and looked at each article. And a couple of things that we looked for, consistency, a lot of this, a lot of the Charter has been updated, but over time, pieces of it. So what you find is it's not cohesive. So looking at cohesive language, I'm looking at what do we still need now in today's terms? And what we found is basically two types of changes were identified. The first one is what I'd call minor change, and that would be language that's outdated, language that maybe should just reference a state statute since the state statute governs, or just administrative in nature. An example is the "he" is used throughout the Charter as opposed to "she", or more of, you know, gender neutral. And also, the second would be major changes, and that would be more the important and very significant changes. We thought the best way to go through this is to look at the change, changes that are being proposed by the Charter Committee. And what you have in front of you is a table. There's a table for each article. And on the left side of the table is the section in that article that they're proposing a change. The middle is the actual language in the Charter, and over on the right is the reason that the committee is proposing a change. And some of the changes, and starting with Article 1, incorporation of former government powers and cities and boundaries, is a really good example of what I would call a minor change. And this is, the word inhabitant is used throughout to acknowledge your residence. So the committee suggests is recommending to remove the word inhabitants and to include the word residents. And you'll see that twice in this section. All right, try and get used to this. There we go. So, and I don't, did you, Mayor, did you want me to do the whole Charter, or did you want to have discussion after each article?
I'm going to look at the council and get your opinion of how you would like that presented. Do you have particular items and sections that you have comment on, or do you want us to go through the entire one? I'm sorry, what were you saying?
We've already gone line by line, so just section by section for questions.
Yep.
Okay.
Hearing over here on the side.
That's it on.
I see a knot ahead.
All right.
Or by exception, anything that changed outside of what we did, like this thing maybe.
Okay, so, so I understand you want me just to highlight the article and then not go through each change and to see if, because I know you've already reviewed it in detail, to see if you had any specific questions. All right, so moving on to Article 2, which is the article that deals with the council. This one is, focuses on a couple, what I'd say, major changes is, would be the electoral districts, the how to, replacement of the mayor or a council member if they were to leave office, compensation for council members. And then there are also what I would call more minor changes. Are there any questions particularly in this article?
Is this the article that we spent a great deal of time, when we look at Julie and Rourke, that we spent time talking about in our group that changes were made?
Yes.
No, I know.
So yes, on this, on this article, I would suggest that, because it is the most, I guess, mediest of all the articles, that I do think we should spend a little bit of time, especially since some of the language was worked on over this past weekend. So we should walk through those.
Yeah, when Councilmember Pizzillo and I met, it was, we had a different discussion than the group before us. So I think this one is the one that we need to probably dive into with the outdated, updated language.
So, in this particular article, because it does, and it is like your city manager mentioned, it's probably a lot of the most changes and some of the most significant. Would you like me to go through this? Okay. So the first section is 3. This is a language that pertains to the very original Charter. The recommendation is to remove it. It's no longer needed. You'll find in Section 5 and also in Section 6, to clarify that if you don't have a full term, if you don't serve in an appointed position in an elected capacity for a full term, it doesn't count towards your term limits. In regards to the electoral districts, currently, when the city hits 150,000, you automatically go into a electoral district. What the committee is suggesting is that when 150,000 is hit, that's certified by a diseminal census, meaning that that can only occur in, well, the next one would be 2030 or 2040. When you have that 150, then it goes to a ballot. And your residents determine whether or not it goes to, the city then turns into a district. Moving along, and I'm just going to hit the more significant ones if that's fine with you. In regards to salary of mayor and council members, currently, the council votes on the salary for incoming council members. The committee felt that that's, that, they understood why, so that the incoming, the people that are voting are not receiving the compensation, but there was some inequity in that on how much the council members are being paid. So their recommendation was to establish a council compensation committee made up of citizens who would review the compensation of the committee every two years. And if the recommendation is less than 1.5%, then that would be brought to the council for approval or rejection. If it's more than 1.5%, then it would go to the voters for approval. 5.1. I don't know why I always mix that up, but yes, 5.1, I'm sorry. The committee would have four members. And then this would also, and then if, when this charter is approved by your voters, that all the council members will then be compensated the same based on the last ordinance you had in regards to salaries. Because the equity was an issue with the committee. Are any comments on that? Moving to Section 12, Council of Judge Qualifications and Members. This is a section that, you had a section already, but it was very, very vague. The city, the committee felt like there should be more language in regards to a process. If there was a council member that had, there was like some wrongdoing that the other council members needed to look at. So they outlined, the first part of this Section A is a process of what the notification would be, how it has to be, it must be published and people must be notified. It also states that there must be five votes of the council members for a council, five votes of the council for a member to be removed. And the council member can only be removed with clear and convincing evidence for unlawful conduct involving moral perpetuity, fraud, malfeasance, misfeasance, nonfeasance, or corruption. It also has a clause in there that it takes three council members to bring a charge forward. And that makes, that ensures that one council member can't just be upset with another and throw a charge, but there has to be at least three members. Are there any questions or comments? The induction of the council was, it was suggested that the new council members that are inducted come in on the first, at 1st of January of the year following the election, having, so there's a, the terms start in January. Change, also, there was a recommendation with the change, the recommendation, the vacancy of the office of mayor. Currently in the Charter, there are two different ways. If a mayor is to, a mayor position needs to be filled or if a council member position needs to be filled. The committee suggested to do that in both in the same way. The committee suggested that if there's more than 60 days before the candidate filing date of the next regular scheduled election, that if there's more than 60 days, then it goes to election. If there's less than 60 days vacant before the next candidate filing date, then the mayor, the council, then the, the mayor is selected by the council to fill that term.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Just tell me.
I was not here when they had their individual meetings on this. So my, I have two questions to you, please. The first question is, the election of the vice mayor, are we stipulating, we're not, we are not stipulating in the Charter, the term of the vice mayor, correct? How long he, that person serves?
That's right. It just, it stipulates that it has to be, right.
Okay, great. And the next question I have for you, please, is that should our mayor resign that office within 60, or after, no, with, and we have to have an election within 60 days, do we have anything in the Charter that says a sitting council member has to resign their position in order to run for mayor?
All right, let me just step back from your question number one. I believe in the draft, there was a clause somewhere that said that the vice mayor was a year. And I think there was a discussion possibly taking that out if that was the pleasure of the council.
Right.
And second, one thing we noticed after the committee, after the committee made this recommendation, was that there was potentially some concerns on what was recommended basically for that reason. If a council member were to then take the mayor position, what happens to that council member's position? Because it this way, the way it's written now is it gets backfilled, and then there's no place to go when, if the council member does not run for mayor. So that was discussed after the committees had already made this recommendation of something that we didn't think of, and that just didn't come up in conversation. So with that, I know that staff has looked at that issue, and I believe your city attorney has thought of some ideas of what we could do to remedy that.
Thank you, Derek. Do you have the revised draft? So the intent of the committee was really to get away from the provision that you had to call a special election whenever the mayor left office for whatever reason, which can create issues if the mayor leaves with 60 or 90 days left in the term. It's not practical to have a special election. Or at other times, outside of the normal election cycle, there's certainly a cost issue in calling a special election. So they looked at mirroring the process for council members. You believe at a certain point, well, I take that back. You can appoint at certain points, or you have a special election, but only if it occurs in the first part of the mayoral term. So it'll line up with the general election that's already scheduled, which, which makes some sense. What we didn't address, and I probably should have caught, is we didn't adjust the language as to what happens in that intervening time period as far as moving council members up to be the mayor. It calls for appointing a mayor until the next election, which could be, you know, three months, six months. But it contemplates backfilling that council member's seat. So unfortunately, a person who got appointed to be the mayor for that short intermittent time period conceivably could have lost their seat because they got backfilled. So we wanted to fix that because that's not fair. So the draft you have in front of you basically makes a distinction between the two scenarios that in the case that a vacancy occurs after that 60-day period leading up to the candidate filing election, to that midterm election, so that occurs in the latter part of the term, council will appoint a mayor. And that, and then you will backfill that position because a person will put into that mayor role until the end of what the original term was. In the other scenario where you're going to appoint someone to be an acting mayor until the midterm election, what council would do was, would be to appoint an acting mayor, which would have all the authority and rights and responsibilities of the mayor, but that person would only serve until the midterm point in time. And then would revert back to their council seat, if that makes sense. So there would, you would be running as a short council. There'd only be six persons on the council. But it avoids that issue of a person missing, losing their council seat, if that makes sense. Councilmember Kemp, I think you did ask some questions.
Clear as mud to me, because all I'm concerned with is that I ran for Mayor Lord's seat when she had to resign to run for mayor.
Correct.
So that left her seat open, and the mayor's seat was open.
Right.
And they appointed Councilmember Pizzillo as the acting mayor. And I just, I, and Buckeye has just gone through this as well because Councilmember Osborne had to resign to run for the mayor of Buckeye. So he's off the council from May, when he filed his papers, until December. And I, I don't know that that is healthy for the city. I don't know why they have to resign.
It's, it's a state, mayor, that's a state.
I don't think they should resign. I mean, they have already been elected to that position. They shouldn't have to resign to run for a higher office because it's, all of us have the ability, well, not the, I don't want to use ability because maybe we don't have the ability, but we have, well, I'm going to say ability. We all could run for mayor if we wanted to, but we shouldn't have to give up our seat to go do that.
Unfortunately, state statute requires you to do that. That's not, that is a state statute.
Can't change it in our charter?
I believe that it would be considered a matter of statewide concern. If you'd like us to research it.
Would you please? I mean, this, this is the time to talk about it, literally. And I, you know, I don't have anybody else to talk about, but I just hated the fact that Mayor Lord, who had worked so hard as a council member, had to resign her seat to go run for a mayor who walked away.
The state statute says.
In a very short period of time, yeah. And then we had to run again in what, two years?
It was very quick.
Yeah.
You know, the statute requires that unless you're in your last year of office, you have to resign your seat in order to run for another office. That's, that's a state statute.
Unless you're in your last.
In your last, final year of your term.
If you're in your final year, then you don't have to resign.
Correct.
Oh, gosh. Well, she hung on, yeah, okay. All right, well, I'm sorry. I just was, it's just, it's so disruptive to the council when we have to go through that, literally. I mean, regardless of who the mayor is and regardless who's running, when we lose one of our council members, we want them to run for mayor because they've got the experience. But it's just, when we lose them, for whatever time we lose them, it's just, you know, it's a big void for the city.
Well, we'll send some information out on the resigned to run.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Rourke, but there, there is a solution, if that's the primary issue you want to avoid, which is you could simply, in the vacancy of the mayor, appoint someone from the existing council to fulfill the remainder of the term and not have it go to election. Now, of course, the downside is, and I think the committee felt that that's a long time to go with an appointed mayor as compared to an elected mayor, but if the appointment is made from among existing council members, no one is running for office. You wouldn't have any resignations to fill that position. It would just be a vote that council takes among itself to fulfill the mayor's term for the, the mayor's spot for the rest of the term.
Okay, all right.
I just wanted to make sure the council's aware that that is an option.
I wasn't on council, but had I been on council, we could have voted for you, since you were vice mayor, to become the mayor, and then we wouldn't have had to have an election. But we'd had to have an election to fill your seat. And then I might not have been here, so, okay.
Does this language allow for that?
Allow for the appointment of a mayor? For the, no, it does not.
In the way that, in the way that was just described?
It does not, but we could write that language.
I would like to see us do that. I mean, not, we may someday have that. But if we want to appoint the vice mayor or.
Then we would run with six, that council would run with six people?
No, the, the way that I would propose it be written, if council wants to pursue that option, is the mayor is replaced from among the body of council members.
Oh, like Surprise did.
And then that council member is then replaced through the normal council replacement process, which is you interview from the community and, and replace the mayor, oh, I'm sorry, replace the council member, pursuant to their normal Charter language. That's correct. You appoint that person.
So Avondale and Surprise do it that way?
Yes, they did. Avondale and Surprise, both did that.
All right. Joe?
I think I'm more confused after that explanation than when we started the discussion. The way, way it is set now, if it's older than 60 days prior, so for example, right now, I think they have to be in in April, correct? I believe, because they moved the dates up to February. So you have to put in your candidacy in April. So 60 days for that would put you in February. So if the position became vacant, say, at the end of January, council would appoint the mayor to fill the remaining of the slot.
Up until the midterm election point.
Up till the midterm election point, or to the terms, what's midterm election point?
Well, that'd be the two-year term. That's when you have your next general election.
Okay, next general election, okay. If it's after, if it's within the 60 days, then, let's see, was within the 60 days.
They would, they would appoint to fill the rest of the term, the two and a half years.
The two and a half years.
I think, or at least mayor and council, I think from the body's perspective, the committee's perspective, I would ignore the 60-day thing and think of essentially the, the next election. Because as the Charter stands currently, you have to call a special election to fill the vacancy. And so we thought, frankly, for just sort of, again, kind of the lack of disruption and to save the taxpayer the money of having to call a special election, we said if you're, you know, if you're closer to a, you know, since we have staggered terms, if you're closer to an election regardless of what your cycle is, then you can go and elect it. If you're, if you're too late to make that next ballot, then you just fill, fulfill the remainder of the term and hold the election normally. The 60 days and all of that was just the legalese to make sure that you actually could actually get your paperwork in and actually have an election properly. So I would just think of, you know, if it's, if it's a four-year term, if you're prior to, if you fill, if you're filling for more than half of the term, our goal was you go in that election cycle. If you're within two years, the last two years of your term, then you would just fulfill the expired or the remainder of the term. That was sort of how we thought about it because, and again, that would be removing that special election requirement. We didn't really talk about the idea of removing the, the election in its entirety.
Is that what the language, is that what the language says for the attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
That was so much clearer than the attorney.
Yeah, I was just, I was just saying, well, I wish I had explained it that way.
He's legislative. It's much better.
I am married to an attorney, so that probably helps.
But I, I think what we want to get at, and I think that might get at, is kind of the, because that's what happened with the mayor. Kavanaugh left, but there was more than two years, so you had, under state law, resigned to run.
Yeah, I only had how long to decide.
It was just 10 days or less, I think.
Yeah, so you resigned. Joe became our ad, acting mayor until we had the election. Then you guys ran on the same cycle as me the first time, and then reran. So I think that's the solution we, that you're looking at, right? So they ran at the next, when the mayor wanted to run, she ran at the next possible election because it was more than two years.
Right.
So we're, I think we're all on the same page.
I feel like I need a whiteboard, like diagram. I think it depends on.
We live this, that's why.
It depends on when in the.
It, it depends on when. And that's what the 60 days is really trying to do, is, is make it where you can actually meet that midterm point. Because recognizing the state keeps moving the candidate filing deadlines, if that makes sense.
So the 60 days, if we just kind of look past the 60 days, I think we're on the same page. We just kind of know it's there for the legalese and to get the right dates.
If, if the intent is that the mayor gets replaced at the midterm election point, the proposed language works. But certainly, there are other alternatives.
But then if there's only like nine months left, then we just appoint and we stay there, but we want to make that fix so we don't lose the council member. So if Joe had nine months, we don't want to lose it so Joe doesn't get to come back as a council member because he was serving at mayor and now he has nowhere, kind of like you have no chair left, you know, what was that game, you know, where there's.
Musical chairs.
Musical chairs, that we have no chair left to put Joe in after the election if he wouldn't run. So I think that's the fix we want so that our council member who takes the mayor's spot has a spot to go back to. We don't want to lose anybody because they decided that they wanted to put themselves out and serve, but maybe not run.
I'm going to look at Tammy and Rourke and Julie here, but, because I think, I think with the exception of a vacancy occurring in the last, or I guess it'd have to, if it occurs outside of the last year of the appointed mayor's term, the resigned to run law is still going to kick in.
Well, he's not running. Let's say he didn't run.
Correct.
We just want to make sure that we have a seat to go.
Those who are interested in a temporary mayor appointment versus resigning to run or if they don't because they're in their final year. So it really would have to be, someone would have to consider the consequences of whether or not they want to offer themselves as a temporary mayor. Because if they wanted to run, they might have to resign anyway.
Then they'd have to resign, yeah.
Right.
I got it.
As recommended, but like you said.
This is, this is probably.
Of the committee's recommendation.
I'm now confused. I'm glad I don't have to run again.
At what, at what point would we be running with only one person, with one less person?
So under the proposal from the committee, as amended by the attorney, which is what you have in front of you, that if the, I don't know if you want to restate it again, Renee, since you did such a great job.
She's not asking me to do it. Go ahead.
If we're appointed, if the, if the mayor is appointed, you have a seat to go back to.
Yes.
And until the next election. Then you go back, and then there's an election. That's, I'm just curious when that's, the only situation that would happen is if mayor steps down, the timing of it, and then that person, someone in the council is appointed to fill it, and then, as turn, then the next election comes up, then that person goes back to council or decides to run. At that point, they'd have to, you just decide if you want to give up their spot or not.
Yeah, if you're serving as the acting mayor, if, unless you're in the final year of your term, you're going to have to resign if you're going to run for mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Right, I think, so the language from Rourke addresses the situation of if you want a, I don't want.
Temporary.
Temporary mayor who, you know, is not intending to run for mayor. That is not something that, that came up in our discussion as, as the committee.
It was just addressing an issue in the, in the drafting.
So this is probably the most complicated part of the Charter because of the domino effect, right? So if you have someone go up, and then you have someone come up, how it happens that the person's just there to temporary, right? And I don't think that was part of what we discussed. So afterwards, we were able to come up with something that worked the same concept of you're only, if it's mid, if you leave before the midpoint, we replace them. But there is a fallback if that council person that's appointed can go back to their position. So again, what the committee did is they provided, and these are just recommendations. The council can, you know, accept them, not accept them, modify them. So we're looking for a lot of feedback tonight about what, how we want to move forward. And this is probably one of the most complicated and also very important, right, part of the Charter. The mayor is an important position, just like all, you know, council positions.
If we don't, if we're having trouble understanding that is our way we can clean it up because I'm afraid when it goes to the citizens, they might look at it and go. What are you guys talking about?
I, I think that the way it's written, you know, it's not an easy way to write it that's legally.
You need a flow chart.
Yeah.
I think, we made one. Depending on the actions of the, the mayor and council, I think that part of the education campaign could be, I think you'd have a flow chart, right?
Right.
Like, if you have a vacancy in the mayor's office, where is it in the mayor's term? And then who is filling that spot? Is it a council member? Is it an outsider? Where are they in their term? And then, you know, then then the last year for the resigned to run law.
Right. So did you come to a conclusion, team? Well.
Summary, what I, so what I heard was we have two choices on how to fill this. One is automatically pushed to the next general election, which is what we have currently. Or, as Julie suggested, we appoint the mayor to fulfill the rest of that term. And then, which that individual would, like Avondale and Surprise did. But that individual has to be cognizant of when the next election is. They may have to resign. but that individual has to be cognizant of when the next election is. They may have to resign to run. No, so let me give you this scenario. We'll use what happened before. So Georgia would have stayed mayor when Kavanaugh resigned, and she was in her last, you had just been elected?
Yeah, I was in my second, I finished my two years of my...
Yeah, so she was in her last two, well, two years and five days or whatever it was. So she would have been appointed as mayor by the council people, would have stayed in that role all the way up, would not have had to resign because she would have been in the last year of her term.
That part's not relevant. She would be the mayor and could run as an incumbent, and as an incumbent, you don't have to resign to run.
Oh, okay, yeah.
If you're appointing that...
There's no resign to run in that scenario.
Okay, so change the scenario. It's not, it's not Georgia who was vice mayor at the time, but it was Joe who had just been elected. No, I'm sorry, it wasn't you.
He had two years.
So if you were, if you were in my position, so you're in my position, I have four years left. So if...
Yes?
I'm gonna say you resign, for whatever reason. This council says, Bill, we want you to do it, for whatever reason. If I take that position, I would have it until her term is up in twenty-two. But I still have two years left on my term, so I would have to resign my council position, right?
Sounds like dominoes.
Yeah, you wouldn't revert back to council member at the end of the term. You would be the mayor and fill out the term.
I would be the mayor and running as the mayor.
And your position would have been replaced by an appointee from...
I'm glad I could simplify that then.
But that's the one option. And then the other is that it goes to a temporary appointment while the position is up for election, and because it's an election, you resign to run, rules under state statute apply.
So, Mayor, may I ask our attorney, when this meeting is over, could I have the copy that explains the changes or whatever?
Oh, do you not have one?
No, I do not.
Oh, it's right there.
Well, I don't even have my computer on. Sorry.
Um, it's, I think you need a second page.
Okay.
It's two pages, so you have a back, a front and back.
Okay, thank you.
So is there a, is there a thought on...
Well, I think with this discussion, it kind of reminds me of that Abbott-Costello skit. I'm still trying to follow it, to be honest with you, on how this all works, except I say simplistic-wise, if it becomes vacant, depending on when it becomes vacant, you're still gonna appoint one way or the other, right? Because you gotta fill it. And the whole goal was not to have a special election. So you're still gonna appoint somebody. The question is, is whoever you appoint, depending on where it is in the schedule, they don't have to resign because you're appointing somebody. So the question is, is if you appoint, depending on where it is, well, you have to backfill that position. And if you have to backfill that position, then that position for that person who filled is out. The position's gone.
Unless they continue to run for mayor.
Unless they continue to run for mayor, but that position's gone.
Yeah, they can't go back.
Not in how, not in how it was drafted.
That scenario is not here in either scenario, because that was the issue we were looking at with the first draft, and we fixed that. So there's nobody who's gonna be left without a seat.
So you're still gonna have six until the next election, is that what you're saying?
If you have the acting intermediate role mayor, yes, you'll run six to the next election.
So the person never loses that until after the next election, and if they run for mayor and get it, then you're gonna have a vacant, you'll have a vacant seat.
Yes.
So this council will have to point that as opposed to that being elected.
In your, okay, now we have like the fourth scenario here. So you're saying you have an acting mayor who, under the right to resign-to-run laws, is eligible to continue in the seat without resigning. They get appointed mayor at the midterm. Yes, there would be a vacant seat on council that they'd have to appoint.
Yeah, because you can't hold a seat, right? You can't hold one seat and run for another.
Well, as long as you're acting, the seat would still be there in that scenario.
If they're running for mayor, they were acting, but now they're running for mayor as the acting mayor, then they'd have to give up their council seat once they pull the papers to run for the mayor?
If they are in their final year of office, they would not.
So this, I'm giving you scenario number thirty-two here.
But they can't run for council at the same time.
But let's say Joe's acting. I'm just, I'm putting more mud here, I'm sorry. If Joe's acting, but he wants to be able to go back to his seat, we aren't filling that, but then Joe says, I want to run for mayor, and he doesn't win.
He needs out.
He doesn't get to go back to his council.
No, because I think, okay, so in that scenario, the only way he doesn't resign is if he's not in it, is if he's in his final year of office. And at that point, he's either elected to run for council or run for mayor. Otherwise, he would have had to resign.
And that wouldn't work with two-year terms staggered, anyway, so mathematically.
No.
One quick question. So the longest we would run with six and one would be...
I'm asking another question.
Here and...
It'd be like nine months, I think. Eight to nine months would be the longest.
Okay. I think the intent, we want to make, we don't want to upheave the entire, the entire council, the domino effect. So we want to save on special, like we want to save special, save on special elections. And we want to not have the upheaval, we want to be able to vote amongst ourselves for whoever to appoint or however, and then run without, with just six people if needed, and have that person have a council seat. So I don't know if that clarifies...
The least disruptive is to appoint a mayor.
That's what we're trying to do. I'm trying to get the intent, the intent, so we can put the bones, the meat on the bones after we have the intent down, but...
So if the council direction was to just appoint a mayor for the remainder of the term, that's pretty easy language. And then you just backfill through the normal council member appointment process. So that's the most straightforward. The other, the other is what brings up all these scenarios.
Yeah, yeah. I don't want to find ourselves in some random scenario that we find, some rabbit hole trail we find ourselves down, that we wrote ourselves into.
But I do think that if it helps, I think that what council really needs to come to agreement on is it more important to have stability among council without having the resign-to-run, and, you know, we saw in Phoenix, I think, three people, you know, resigned to run for mayor. So you either, you have to balance that desire for stability versus the desire to have an elected mayor. Because, I mean, that's, I think those are the two...
I think that captures what the committee struggled with.
Yeah, those are the two competing goals. And I think that if council can really decide amongst yourselves which of those two goals is more important, to have an elected mayor or to have the stability among council, then we know which of those two directions to try to write clarifying language around. Sherri?
I have to go, I think, for stability, and I may change my mind because this is just all over the board. But my theory is if we are still at large, that means everybody had the opportunity to vote for the council member, so it's not district. And then that brings me to the question for the districts. Is that a must-go-to districts or send it out? Or is that something we want to put a may? Because if you are selecting someone to take the place of the mayor for the remainder term until the next election for the stability, I'm okay with that because we are all at large. So everyone had the chance to vote for every single council member here. Where I get a little, ugh, I don't hope I like that deal, is the districts. I don't know if that makes sense. I don't know.
I think they had some there on the districts. They changed the, they changed the population.
Right, no, on the districts, what they're, it is that it, once a census is taken and you have one hundred and fifty thousand population, which is the closest, the next would be two thousand and thirty, if you have one hundred and fifty then, it would go to the voters. The voters decide whether it goes to districts.
And I was wondering if that should be a may go to the voters?
Well...
Shall go to the voters.
The committee felt like it should go, it should go to the voters, and they give your residents an opportunity to decide whether they wanted to go to districts at that time. And it could be, looking at projections, and of course, projections are based on the data you have now, you know, maybe two thousand and thirty, maybe more, two thousand and forty, which would be almost twenty years from now.
I guess my concern was if we look to do the mayor as part of the council to have that continued continuity, as long as they're at large, that really kind of doesn't change the dynamic. But then once we go, if we try to do the mayor as part of the council, but if it's from districts, then that does disenfranchise the other six. So that's where I'm kind of like at a...
I will say that a lot of the, and maybe Renee, you can jump in here too, is a lot of councils, there's several committee members that felt strongly that at some point, that when the city of Goodyear is big enough, they would want representation from council members. And so there was quite a bit of discussion of that, whether one fifty, you know, is, at that point, take it to your voters and see what they think, but they felt that should be the resident's decision.
And we're gonna look at this again every ten years, resident?
And that's a good question. One of the recommendations is that we put in the charter that the council should, not shall, but should look at the charter as a whole, holistically, every ten years. But for the, most likely, the charter will be looked at for some other reason, right? Something will come up. I mean, the charter can always be looked at. The council, at any point in five years, they could say, well, let's do this again. That's up to the, up to the council.
And I think the nuance...
Of a hundred and fifty arbitrarily, I mean, we did not have a lot of discussion when we said that hundred and fifty. They just threw out the number. And somewhere in there, I don't know how you do this, we have to consider how the city develops, if they want to go district. And that was our problem of not doing districts, because the West was not enough developed to really do that. And by doing it at large, we get a lot done in the city. And I'm a large person, because I've seen that nobody takes ownership of just one little section. We take ownership of the entire city when we're looking at something. And looking at the councils at our district, and the other thing, everybody has an assistant, everybody has, it's a cost. And so I've never really been for it. Now, may there be someday, but I don't, anymore, I do not think a hundred and fifty thousand is a big enough population to warrant that. And again, I think we, we're still trying to develop it out, because we're still going, we're still going south. And it goes all the way to Mobile, you know that. So at large, just, it ensures that you will look in the entire city. And we do do that, as you all well know, so we don't pick and choose, yeah.
So Mayor, I would say the robust discussion the council has had regarding the vacancies is comparable to the robust discussion this group had about districting. I would say that was probably our most robust, potentially contentious, complicated and complex conversation we had as a committee. You know, I think that we had, we, the committee felt that there were pros and cons to going to a district system in theory. And then I think when we looked at it in practice, as it relates to the city of Goodyear, to be colloquial, I think we kind of thought, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And so we didn't really feel like we needed to go to districts now in twenty-twenty after the census. And so, you know, we kind of struggled with, why do they pick a hundred and fifty thousand? And we ultimately, you know, kept that with the theory that, you know, we think the city's running well now at large, and, you know, we debated back, well, if I have a district, I have my more closer representative. But also, it's at large, I can go to any of you with my issue. I don't have to just go to who represents my district. But we didn't want to presume to know what the future residents, not inhabitants, of Goodyear would want. And so the idea of having that question resurface, whether it's in twenty-thirty or twenty-forty, was a question we thought was worth having, but that us not, you know, we don't have the information, that the information that people twenty years from now will have in terms of where is Goodyear as a position. And recognizing, as Tammy noted, that the council could always undertake the issue at a future, at a future time. And that's really how we came to, I think, the decision we had, is that we, as a group, didn't feel the need for districting now and in the near future, but we didn't want to necessarily close the door unilaterally.
No.
May?
Did we finish the...
The observant, if you look at Glendale, their district, and just keeping watch on them and reading the newspapers and talking to them, they get very involved in those districts. And lots of anger, and, I mean, many councils do that when they're like that. And so that was my observation, and I've been following and tracking that since I've been in this office. So I'm sorry, I have to turn over my council. Go ahead, Molly.
Well, I really struggled with this part, because our city is only ten miles wide, and it's very, very long. And we could easily get fifty thousand more people in Estrella and Rainbow Valley, and nothing in the West. And if we go to districting, there's no way you're going to be able to make it equal with numbers. And I think the number that's in our charter now is not feasible for the way we are growing. We do have a master plan, but as your committee said, a resident can go to any one member for any reason, at any time, for anything. They do not have to find out who their district is and then call that person. And that is, to me, an advantage for our city, and our residents seem to enjoy that. However, I have walked precincts for other council members in Buckeye, Glendale, Peoria, and Surprise, and I am astounded at how little participation there are from some of the districts, because they're much smaller than the other districts. They were not able to draw their lines. They did it geographically rather than by population. And that concerns me, because until we really fill out and it's equitable, I don't see us doing that. And I, if anything, I would want that number risen to two hundred thousand, even though that sounds like a big number. But we've got to fill out the West Valley to be fair to everyone. I mean, the North is pretty much filling out, and Estrella is pretty much filling out. Rainbow Valley is just now kicking off, getting ready to go.
Estrella's got a lot more land to go.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, but Estrella has a lot more land. It's amazing.
Well, I know, and they've got a lot more to go out there. But, I mean, they could put all six districts in Estrella. If you're doing it by population, by the time they get all built out, so...
And I think that when this council formed, we had at one time three from Pebble Creek.
We did. We had three from Pebble Creek.
That caused a lot of...
There were five.
We had five.
Five from Pebble Creek?
At one point, there were five from Pebble Creek.
Yeah. And it caused a lot of conversation, and I don't blame people. But at that time, the population wasn't as strong as the others. And so people, people weren't stepping up to run, you know, there was the opportunity, but people just weren't doing it, so. You have a question?
I appreciate the committee and all the discussion. This is a very complicated issue. Following up on the, I guess, the cons of districting, one of the things about being at large is that each of the council members are accountable to the entire city. And everybody has the opportunity to vote people in or vote people out. And in terms of running, it's a lot easier. If you're in a district, you don't have to get near as many signatures and things like this. And when you are at large, you really have to be fully invested. One of the things that came up in our small group was even just to remove the trigger and just leave it out and wait and see how the future is, because we have different legislative districts, we have different utilities, we, different school districts. We are so divided up, and I think the one strong thing about us is that we're one Goodyear. And I sure would like to see that kept.
Take the trigger out, with that, just saying we're not gonna re-district.
Not the trigger, the number.
Oh, the number?
I think it'd be fair to say, we probably discussed every permutation, including taking it out in its entirety, recognizing that the council could always, you know, resubmit the, reform the committee and reevaluate the issue, as Tammy noted. We did review that, and actually, I'll give a shout-out to our vice chair, Jared Hickman, who I think pretty well characterized the fact, I think, one of the points you made, which was the fact that there are many things that can determine sort of what is an area, what is a community. And, you know, one of the examples, which is sort of basic, was kind of that idea of, you know, if you're south of I-ten, you're on public water. If you're north of I-ten, you're on private water. And what do those lead to different decisions that you may make based on some of those different nuances. So we did, we had a lot of discussion about the different ways to skin this cat.
Right. And there was a lot of, I mean, there's both ways, and I think also, but just, there was a lot of feeling as though there was representation that was wanted, and a lot of people come from other areas that are used to that and feel like, oh, they know, they know who to call. The concern about clustering also brought, came up, and the committee members of clustering of council members. But it was like Renee mentioned, it was a very good robust, I think with the compromise was to keep the one fifty go to vote, not have an automatic trigger that takes you right into districting.
Yeah, because all one fifty does is generate a vote.
Yes, right, and it's one fifty...
Pay for a vote. We've got to pay for an election.
You just do it with the election.
The one fifty would be at the...
At the general election.
You do it with the election.
At a census point, so in two thousand and thirty, two thousand and forty, and... So in 2030, 2040, and then you'd have it the next election point.
And then the next election point. So you're not, it's not a special election, it's just asking the voters at that time. Plus, the council can do whatever they wish. I think we need to show our residents that we're, that we're still open to that. It's still a possibility of going forward, but we're going to let them decide later on. Instead of us deciding at 90,000 people, this is what we think we should do. I mean, we were, you know, the original number was 60,000 or 65,000. It was just, it was arbitrary as well. And there was a lot of talk at that time about, that's a really good thing because, and I, I said five, but there were four members on council, I was doing it in my head. But there were four members of council, so a majority of the council was from one community. And people were out of their minds over it. And then when the charter change occurred to 150, there was a concern that it was, it was an attempt to control what was going to happen forward of the city. Now, fast forward to 2011, everything changed. You look at how it's spread out and-
We have four right now from Palm Valley.
Well, Palm Valley is everything north of I-10 except Pebble Creek.
I'm just saying, we have four from Palm Valley. So, you know, you, Joe, Laura, and Brandon.
I'm south.
You're south, you're not Palm Valley?
Just us two south of the, south of the I-10.
So are you by yourself?
I'm in Canyon, Canyon Trails.
You're by yourself?
So I'm by myself.
Sherri's been trying to talk here for a few minutes. Sherri?
I, I agree 100. I think Laura stated it very well. I, I, for me, I, I see so much division right now, and we're going to look at this in 10 years. So in 10 years, if we want to put it back for our citizens, this is just arbitrary. We're just right now arbitrary, saying, hey, let's just have districts. I mean, it's still arbitrary to put it in there. So I think the, looking at it, and that is a possibility in 10 years. I know I'm so tired of my district, my party, my this. This is the one, I was telling you guys earlier, I'm just done with them all. Because this is the one political subdivision that seems to work, even compared to other cities. Chandler has 250,000, and they function as one large group. And I think we actually function, and I see us function where I don't see other levels, even the state legislature. It's my district needs this, and my district, and our district needs the water, and our district doesn't. And it's a lot of fighting, whereas we can work. I, there's only a couple of us right now, but that's subject to change as people move and get involved. Hopefully, all you guys on the charter committee, I'm done. So anybody interested? And that's, I think it's great we have such interested citizens to bring this forward. But having done this and gone through the mass exodus where our council was, you know, thank Joe for stepping up and doing such a great job as the mayor in that period, I would propose we scratch that for now, know that we can always, whoever, future councils, it will not be me, we'll bring it back, and then also have the mayor appointed as for the remainder of the term. And I like that idea because, again, it's at large, so that everybody has a say. We don't have to have a special election in 60 days because our mayor, Mayor X, whoever would be appointed, would have been appointed at large anyway because we didn't have districts. Once we go to districts, that kind of muddles that up. And then you start getting, well, you only pick people from X neighborhood. So that's my proposal.
Well, what we have here in Goodyear is we have people that moved here from all over the country. And so they come and they want the politics like they did. And we get that quite frequently, you know? Why aren't you partisan, you know? And why are you nonpartisan? And why do you do this? And, you know, we, in Chicago, we did this, and Michigan, we did that. So that's always, that brings up the conversation, so I just add that to it. So where are we on this now?
I, I want to go back to the election. I want to finish the election one, too, but I'm okay with how it is now with the wait till 150, let go to a vote for that, for that portion. But I'd like to go back to the conversation, I don't think we finished the conversation on how we're going to do the election.
All right, so we need to, two issues. I don't know if there's a consensus on the electoral districts yet. I'm hearing two different things, which direction you want to give us? Are we going with it, remain how it is, are we not? I just don't, I need a consent.
It sounds like everybody would rather stay at large, isn't that what you?
Yeah, I'm with Laura.
I'm not supposed to really vote on anything here, so I'm just trying to look at everybody.
Consensus direction?
Yeah.
Looking at the lawyer.
So what, what that would, what that would look like is that would be your current charter, when this is brought to the public to look at, they'll see all these changes, and so that section would be struck out.
It's okay.
Okay, and it, just so you know, so, I mean, that's, so it would be struck out when it goes, when it goes. Is that the consensus I'm hearing, the direction?
I don't think we've heard from all council members, so I-
Okay.
Yeah, Kent, Kent. Joe?
The problem is, if you strike that out at 150, you're going to district. That's what it says right now, right?
I think the proposal is to remove the trigger. Strike the whole section out, there would be no, there would be no need for the section if you're not going into districts. And maybe the attorney would feel different, but I-
We would strike out everything that refers to districts.
You'd strike it all out. Not since you're removing it from your charter. You're removing the trigger.
So there's no, and there would be no reference to districts at all?
Correct. Because there's nothing to reference. You're not giving any kind of trigger point, you're not giving any, you know, so there, you would just remove it if you're going to remain at large.
I suspect at some point, you're going to have to address the issue.
I'm sure it's going to come up some point, but then that somewhere down the way-
I didn't have a problem the way you, you put it together because they're not going to vote on it until 2040 at the earliest. Because when you think about it, every 10 years, you've got to have the census at a 150. And so not until 2040 will you probably even be there. And then the vote goes in, you know, so you're looking at something 20, 20 years from now.
Yeah, but even council could decide to-
You could decide to change it by then, or whatever the case may be, but at least you're addressing the fact that there's a possibility of it going to districts, that's all. You know, as opposed, if you take it out, then you're going to have some blowback probably of, why didn't you discuss districts? I'm just throwing that out where-
I think we're not taking it out. The consideration is always there.
Yeah, if we take it out, in five years, we're supposed to look at it again. We can put it back in, and then maybe it'd make more sense.
Because the, the problem is, this is my view on this, is that you don't, you don't know exactly the development and how each section is going to go. And that's been worrisome for us all alone. And we've said this over and over again, we're worried about the people in the west area, you know, because there aren't enough in there to, to, to kind of be a power area for. And so that, that's always been our, our, really, as we've been developing.
Yes. Yeah, Mayor, but as, as the council member mentioned, it wouldn't be at least till 2030, most likely 2040, when it would go to vote for 20, so 20 years down the road.
And then there'll be at least two charter committees to relook at it at that, during that time period.
You can relook at it every 10 years. Yeah, every 10 years, I would think that, I would think most councils would be doing that. I think you have to, to do planning of some sort.
That's the only reason why I didn't have a problem with the, with the way it's written, because you're looking at 20 years, and you're going to have two council review, you're going to have two charter reviews by then that may change it altogether and says, let's push it out another 10, 20 years, you know? Because we're not there yet. We need more, more people, so. The only reason why I like it is it addresses it to some extent, because you say people come up to you, when you're going to go to it, well, you've got something in there. Maybe 20 years from now, but you've got something in there.
You may, but that could change also.
Could change because you're going to have two, you're going to, every 10 years, you're going to review it, so it could change again. But to take it totally out and not address it at all, in my opinion, I think you're making a mistake.
Council?
For a city that's 11% built out, we're going to have constant change and constant growth. And I just would foresee a lot of shifting and alteration, depending on which way the growth. I think for cities that are maybe all built out and their population's stable and established, you know, maybe that makes more sense. But I think one of Goodyear's strengths, I think, is that we, the collaboration, and I just would hate to lose that.
Yes, Bill?
You know, I, I think I was in the same boat with, with Joe at the start of the conversation. It was in the original charter, it was, you know, the original charter, what, '87? I think it's when it started, is that the original charter?
Yes.
'87? Here we are in 2020, you know, 30 years later, we're still not anywhere near where we, where we should be. It's always in there. I know that if I'm alive in 2040, I won't vote in support of, of districting because I don't believe it's in the best interest of the city. So I would, I think at this point, would support just the removal of it and let the, let future councils decide whether they want to add it back in. But if we're going to go through this wholesale change, you know, to, to remove it, with the caveat, and I think in the documentation that we provide to the public is, you always have the ability to add it back in.
That's right, exactly.
I think we just can't, we just can't produce a document that has a strike through with no explanation. And I think that's key to, obviously, the, the way we talk about this whole document is going to be key, but that particular section needs to have a, the council felt that the public always has the ability to add this back in at any time, but did not want to restrict future blah, blah, blah. That's it.
So with that, I believe we do have consensus to remove the trigger from, from the document, so we'll reflect that in the next draft.
All right, so we'll remove it. All right, so moving forward then with the replacement of the mayor, was there a consensus on? I believe there is more discussion and-
I, I think stability, whatever it takes to make it stable.
Yeah.
Okay, I think should be the focus. If you can get it that simple for stability, whether it's appointing for the rest of the term, whatever the case may be, so you don't have chaos or whatever, to me, that's the way to go.
I agree. It's good for the staff, it's good for the business community.
So the scenario where, when the mayor is, a council member replaces the mayor, that person stays there until the end of the term?
They essentially become the mayor, and then they would run as an incumbent, so you don't have any of the resigned to run issues and their positions. So if you offer yourself up for your peers to vote you into that position and you're selected, your council position would then be filled pursuant to charter provisions. So you don't, you don't get to go back. You would be, you would be the mayor.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yes.
That was really a meme for horses. I just have a question, something I've always wondered about, and I don't know if it was addressed, and I, doesn't matter either way, just, you and her horse over there. Was there any conversation on, right now, our mayor has two terms, our council has three terms. Was there any conversation on that? And I don't even know why that originally was different. So I'm just, I have no clue, so just a question.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You mean like my term, that I'm going to be one of the longest mayors that's been in Goodyear?
I don't, I don't, yeah. I don't recall the, the committee having any problems or concerns with the way it is now. I don't, Renee, maybe you want to, so nothing was, there was no recommendation?
I think the lawyer can give an explanation of why I've been extended each time.
Actually, well, I don't know the reason why there's a difference in the term limits, because it is three terms for a council member and two terms for mayor. But at one point, there was a transition in the, wasn't the mayor two-year terms at one point?
Yeah, there were two.
Yeah, so then I think when that got changed, right, then it got changed over to two-year terms. So I think it mirrored up to the, the old two-year terms.
We don't want to go back to that because that, that's very limited. Well, I, I had reasoned that I, two years is because they interrupted my four-year terms. I had to quit at two years. And then they added some more because the state changed our election date.
Balldate elections.
So then I got two more for that, is that right?
Right, you filled out a remainder of a term which doesn't count for a term under the charter. So then you were entitled, you could run for two more terms.
And so that was an area, I would say the, some of the, I don't want to call them administrative, but some of the procedural items like, like the term limits, whether or not, you know, an appointment counts as a term, how do we handle that, which, which Tammy covered. Another one was ages. And frankly, it was one of those things of, we kind of had a debate, and the question was, you know, just to give you a piece, you know, if at 18, if you're old enough to serve and die for your country, and if you're old enough to vote, should you be old enough to run for the office, to be elected? Vote for yourself. But I would argue the, the committee ultimately couldn't come up with a good rationale. We wanted to have a reason why we changed something, right? And so, you know, because we, we sort of, there were, there were, I guess I'm just speaking for myself, it's kind of the idea of, would I vote for myself? Would I vote for 18-year-old Renee? Probably not. But I can't really come up with 25. Why? Because now you can rent a car, right? It was, it was that issue of, we, we wanted to have a rational basis for the changes that we brought to you and recommendations we, we made. And I, I don't know that I can say definitively that we said, well, you know, because here's why you're going to have three and two. I think other than just that idea of, we really wanted, you know, that idea that the council member position should be kind of a training ground to then be mayor. And so, but that, that's about the best I can, I can recollect. We didn't, we didn't have a specific, I don't, I don't recall a specific, here's why we're going to do, or keep the, you know, SAS code in this case.
All right, I think we are ready to move forward?
Yes.
All right, so just two more items in this article-
Going to move forward, guys.
That I think, well, this article that I think I'd like to point out, and that's the vacancy of the council member. Again, the whole 60 days, if it's 60 days before the filing deadline, then you would go to the election. If it's less than 60 days, you would have a person be appointed to that position, to the council member's position. And then the next item that I would point out is currently, Section 16 requires that the council shall give notice of when you're going to have meetings in an ordinance, but you're not, but you're not to have meetings less than two times a month. Committee suggested removing that, that's more administrative in nature. You can, that can, if it's in an ordinance, that can be placed in your code. But that, pretty much, it gives you the decision of how many, but not requiring two times, knowing that maybe in the summer, there's not as many agenda items and, you know, vacation, whatnot. Yeah, so 15, see how good I am here at the, this is Section 16, and I have passed it. Sorry. So there's vacancies, vacancy of member. This is quorum, oh, here we go. So minutes are now, journals are now minutes. So it should be right after that, 16.
It should be right before.
There we go. So right here, this is where we're saying we're going to, it's meetings of council boards, commissions, and committees, changing the title just to meeting to council. Boarding commissions are, their meeting times are based on their, whatever their ordinance or bylaws are. But this just says specifically, you have to have meet twice a month. So we're just scratching, just removing that. Doesn't mean you can't meet, you can meet more than twice a month, but that would be up to the council to decide that. And then the committee felt like, felt good about that because you are responsible to your constituents. And if you weren't doing your job, there's, you know, opportunity for your constituents to let you know that. And then that is really the only major change, except maybe moving, you know, changing the word journal to minutes. So let's move on to Article number three, which is the city manager. Looking at the very first part of this article, Section 1, currently, the charter states that it's at the discretion of the council to enter a contract. Really, it's best, it is really best practices for both the employer and employee to have a contract. So to require a contract. And also that the contract terms and length is something that is negotiated in the contract. That doesn't need to be in a city charter. Remember, the city charter are laws, your code are more in administrative, that's more administrative issue, and that can be, again, that's something between the employer and the employee. There's also Section 5 where it talks about, again, I'd say more, it's administrative in nature in that assistant city manager qualifications and duties, that if the city manager were to leave, we would then have an assistant city manager. Well, that position's no longer here. So making this more general, that the city manager will leave a person that's, that will designate a person to perform her or his duties when they're gone. And so make it more generic, you're going to, your organization's going to change over time, and so whom that is will be up to the city manager, and obviously, that would be a qualified person. And then finally, under Section 6, currently, there's a clause in here that the city manager cannot be removed within a period of 90 days succeeding the next municipal general election. And the committee's suggesting that, that actually be changed to the induction of any council member following the election. So it doesn't start when the election occurs, because that council member's not- So it doesn't start when the election occurs, because that council member's not even starting their job until they're inducted, right? So once the induction occurs, then the, the clock basically is set, per se. Moving, any questions on that? If not, moving to Section four, which is administrative departments, offices. This, in this one, just to highlight, in, like, for example, in the first section, it says a council will, will determine where, when positions are not compatible. It's more administrative duties, those are the functions of the city manager. So if you look at that, we're making it clear it's the city manager's functions. There's a section in here on city clerk, it actually almost looks like a job description, what they should do. That shouldn't be in there, it should be that you're gonna have a city clerk, the city clerk will report to the city manager, and the duties will then, been outlined in ordinance. Looking at Section three of this, it actually discusses your city attorney, the city attorney. And the committee viewed the city attorney as parallel, kind of mirrored to your city manager, right? The level, their officers of, of the, of the city. Where the city attorney should also have a written contract, and again, that the, there's that sixty-days clause after the induction of a council member. And also added to the city attorney's section is that the removal of the city attorney, like with the city manager, takes five members of the council. The final item on here is the merit system. A lot of organizations are looking at the merit system as far as who should be covered in the merit system. Currently, your charter covers everybody but your charter officers. And the committee felt as though the, this would allow, looking, allowing the council to determine through an ordinance, who should be covered and who should not be covered. Whether everyone should be covered, great, have an ordinance, but maybe not. And as, as employment changes, as views change, as, you know, how we function as a, as an organization changes, that might change. As you recall, the state used to be covered when I worked there, now a lot of the employees are uncovered. Some organizations, the, the department directors are uncovered, and then the rest of the staff are covered. Typically, if something like this were to occur, there'd be a grandfather clause of anyone that's, you know, in there now, it remains the same, and anyone hired at whatever level you deemed would be at-will, per se, would then be at-will. Any questions? Moving, there were no changes to Article five. Moving to Article six is the finance and taxation. In this section, and I'll quickly go through this, there's a lot of verbiage regarding old finance practices. So, for example, having a sinking fund, doesn't even sound good, but we don't use them anymore. There's another one in here talking about a... Oh, a cash basis fund, again, outdated. So in essence, they took out, they struck out all the, the language that's specific to the type of process, and basically said the city will establish an accounting system that follows generally-accepted accounting principles as set forth by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And it was important to the committee to identify what those standards are in that committee. And then just to, just to step back, at the very beginning of this charter, of this charter article, it does, it defines a finance director, and they are suggesting to remove that. That's administrative, you don't need a position in your, in your charter. Obviously, you can have a finance director. And then later in this article, it talks about an independent audit. The committee's suggesting to remove the language here and just state that the independent audit will occur pursuant to state statute. Because state statute governs that, and that way, if things change, you're very specific, you're gonna, you're gonna do it, you're gonna follow state statute. Moving then to Article seven. There we go. Should have brought my other glasses, there we go. Okay, let me see if I can find the ones. A lot of our processes have changed because of technology. We used to post our notices, right, at City Hall, at the library, now we have websites. So a lot of this change is bringing up to, to new standards. So instead of saying you're gonna post your, your ordinance and resolutions at City Hall, it just says, you're gonna post it at the official posting location, giving you more options to meet whatever standards you have at the time.
We did that too, we just made that change, yeah.
The other part, the other charter, I mean, excuse me, other section in here talks about, you have to read all your ordinances by title. This would allow you then to just read it by number and state the title, and not have to read the whole ordinance, which I think is the practice. Yeah, the, Section nine clarifies that the mayor and, and city clerk has five business days to attest everything, right now it says five days, just clearly identifying that. Publications, your charter currently had very specific clauses on when you, where and when you had to publicize any ordinance. This is basically changing that saying you're gonna follow state statute. And a lot of sections in here said that the poor city clerk had to keep three copies of everything. I don't know where she's putting it, but that this would now just require her to only have one copy, because mostly, everything's electronic anyways. So that kind of highlights what I would, you know, some of the larger items. Then moving on to contracts, unless there's any discussion. Charter, and this is Article eight, preparation. This allows, this article specifically says the mayor and city manager can basically prepare and develop the contracts. They put, or, and, or they're designated, in case somebody, in a situation where the mayor, you got an acting or acting city manager. Trying to see if there's any contracts, official advertising, striking all of that out, and just saying you're gonna follow state statute.
That's so much simpler, isn't it?
Yeah. And that pretty much highlights those changes. In the election section, Section nine, a lot of making it general, gender-neutral, clarifying that the person that receives the majority of the vote, it wasn't necessarily clear. And then there's, well, I guess there's a section in here on elections, on districts, so we might need to then remove this section. So that's, let me just make a note of that. Regarding like district elections. Article ten, there were no changes. Municipal court, the judge came in and spoke to, and I have to give a big shout-out to a lot of your department directors, and the municipal judge came and spoke to the committee members about their particular sections, which was kind of nice, and gave some kind of credence to these sections. So one of the things your charter did not have is it didn't establish the court by name, and what is that official title? So this does, it, and also clearly identifies that the officer of the court is a judicial officer, so just more clarifying positions and terms. That the presiding judge may appoint Judge Protems as required, in which, and, if required, and if, and within her budgetary, budgetary constraints. And also, it's kind of interesting, there's a clause in here that says, all penalties and fees collected by the court shall be basically paid to the judge. And so, which sounds, I guess, kind of interesting in theory, but just saying that it's gonna be paid to the court, and not particularly to the judge. The judge provided some language on, on the rights and processes that were, allows us to be more in modern, I guess, modern in what the process is. So that concludes that article, there were no change.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead. For the judge, when you establish the court, and then you establish that the presiding judicial officer, should we put in there that we should have a contract with them? Because we already have a contract with the city manager, we have one with the city attorney, and this is the other person we appoint.
In the, in the charter, it, and I don't think it's in this part, because this is only what we changed, I believe it says already that there's a two-year contract.
For the judge?
Right, so I just, so in this table is only the language that was changed. So I believe in your charter currently, there's a, there's a clause in there about a two-year contract. Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure.
And is there another que, and I'll look that up while we're...
Okay, that's great, thank you.
That was also my question, just that the language would mirror the two other pointed positions.
Yeah, in, in Section five, it does say, the presiding judge shall serve a term of two years and may be reappointed. There's, there shall be no limit to the number of terms a presiding judge may serve.
But it doesn't say, we give them a contract, and I would like to have that in there.
Oh, the con, specific to a contract?
Didn't say, we, we give them a contract, right? We have them.
Is there a contract currently with the judge?
With them, and the salary.
Right, so it doesn't say anything about a contract, that's certainly been the practice with the city, but we could incorporate that, but you, as far as a judge, you want, we will want to specify the term.
Yes.
It's a little more difficult to terminate a judge than it is a normal employee. So that's something, there is recommendations, I think even from the Supreme Court, they recommend terms of two to four years.
So we, if it's your, if it's your direction, we can definitely add language about a contract, and then we'll leave the two-year term in there, I mean, that would be the contract term. Is that sufficient?
I think it's consistent with who the council appoints.
Right.
And selects, whoever we appoint, we give them a contract.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll make that, that addition, thank you. Article twelve, franchise and public utilities, there were no recommended changes. In Article thirteen, this is the article where the recommendation was for the city council to consider the formation of a charter review committee to review your charter. Again, this is not a requirement, and I don't know if you want to make a requirement, as much as it's just that you consider that. And then the last article is Article fifteen, and that's just a type of grammar error. So that's really looking at the big, what I call the big, major topics. So just so I can summarize, I believe that what I've heard was that you want to remove the charter, the, the elect, the district section, thank you. And that the, in regards to replacing the mayor, the council will then determine or appoint someone from the council to replace the mayor, and that position, the council position, would then be backfilled as usual from being an appointment. And the municipal court will have a contract, so those three items. All right, thank you. I gotta say, this has been a great pleasure, the, the committee's been wonderful. I want, want to make sure that we recognize them, if this would be the...
Yes, well, I want to give, first of all, applause. I am so impressed. This was not an easy feat, and I don't know what all your career feels are, but I have to tell you, I, I don't think we could have done a job like you did. I mean, excellent.
No, thank you.
And what a relief it is, because people do pull that charter out every now and then, and they say, yes, but that's in the charter, and it's not, so, then we have to deal with it. So tonight, we want to honor you, so we have a little something to give you, and I've asked one of our councilmen to do it, and so, we'll announce your name, and I'm supposed to let the council do this tonight, but I'll come around and give you an elbow afterwards.
And Mayor, Tammy, Tammy already hit on it, but I did want to thank Darcy, Roar, Julie, Doug, Judge Galindo, and of course Tammy. We had a lot of help from staff to help give us their perspective as the practitioners, and kind of give us that pragmatic, real-world, you know, boots-on-the-ground perspective. And of course, just Darcy for, for keeping us organized, and keeping us notified, and keeping things moving along, so I just want to thank all the staff as well.
Well, this is what makes our city so good, we have such great volunteers that come in and spend the time that they do. And, and then, of course, I know it's hard, when you, then you come before the council, and then we have some little controversy and suggestions and so forth, and after all the hours you spent, and you, you know, you thought, this is exactly the way we want this, and so...
Right, I think, I hope a lot of them will see that we, we had very similar conversations. And, you know, the funny thing is, Article two, it's like the second thing you hit to. I remember my second meeting thinking, is every meeting gonna be this meaty and this weighty? And then you get into these other ones, and you breeze through them.
Well, now I got a little taste of how this meeting goes once in a while. So are you going to call the names out? Okay.
I will do that.
Good.
So we'd like to first recognize our Chair, Renee Guillen. Our Vice Chair, Jarrett Hickman. I'm gonna say we'll keep our spacing. Kent Hedges, I don't believe is with us tonight. Kelly Kessler. Shawanda Randolph. And Dave Schaper.
Anybody that can take a picture of them? What? Yeah, I'd like to, they should get their pictures. What do we have? We can't. Oh, that's right, sorry about that. That's too bad. It's another reminder, so.
I think we covered, in one of our last meetings, we covered, there's still, still a number of steps in the process, so hopefully, there'll still be time for us to...
Well, again, just one more thank you, extraordinary, we're so pleased, and what a presenter you both are. It was wonderfully, it was well-done, so.
Thank you, we, we had a great group, I was really impressed with the amount of participation and discussion, and just a really impressive group, so thank you to you guys for appointing such great people.
No, we're very fortunate. Well, yes.
So if I could just wrap it up, Mayor?
Yes.
So what will happen next is, staff will go back and make these changes, and then we will come before council to ask you to do a call for election, so we can begin that process, because any of these changes must be brought to a vote of our, of our residents to approve the charter changes. We are looking at the March ninth of 2021 ballot, and so we'll be very busy as a staff team, working on an education. I hesitate to call it campaign, but really, just to go out and make sure that when this does come to the ballot, that our voters are aware that there is an election. When the election is, it'll be a mail-in-only ballot, and of course, the issues that they'll be considering when they go to vote. So we look forward to bringing the document back and doing a call for election.
Wonderful. Any business left on the table here, anything around to discuss? Well, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all.
And I'm feeling badly, because we can't do any pictures.